Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I want to welcome you to the Select Force Meeting tonight. Would you please stand and... Point of allegiance for me?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with mercy and justice for all.
Good evening again. I want to welcome everybody. I'll ask that those of you that are under emergency status, please leave your phones on. What happened to those that are not? Please put them in airplane mode for a while, and I appreciate it. We're going to open up... We don't have any appointments, so I'm going to take this time, not only for the people here in the audience, but people at home to talk about the transfer station. On Tuesday, December 25th, the transfer station will be closed. On Wednesday, December 26th, it will be open from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. On Saturday, December 29th, it will be open from 8:00 to 5:00 also. And on Tuesday, January 1st, it will be closed. That's a normal day. On Wednesday, the 2nd, it will be open from 8:00 to 5:00, and on Saturday will also be open 8:00 to 5:00. Last Saturday, some of us realized we had a power outage. And during that time, it was during the opening hours of the transfer station, and the transfer station shut down early. So if anybody has complaints when they drove up and couldn't get to the gate, now you know why. Thank you. Moving on, budget for the police.
Thank you, sir. So for this year, as we built the budget and looked down through, we went line by line, as we do every year. And this year, going into 2019, it's going to be a $29,000 increase over last year's budget, which represents about a 2% increase. And as we go down through, you'll see where the increases are. My chief's salary is aligned in and of itself. It's a three-year commitment, fixed at $86,000 a year, and that's good until December 2020. Thank you so much. This really is, you know, an honor to be your police chief. I've lived here 20 years, and it's just been a great opportunity. So in December 2020, you could decide to keep me or set me out to pasture, and then I get to do the same thing as well. But just know that I've really enjoyed myself as your chief. Full-time hourly, that is where all the full-time police officers are at. They're all lumped into this line. This line is up $14,000 bucks this year. What that includes is two full-time lieutenants, a full-time sergeant, and seven full-time officers. This is going to... I hate to say the word "back fund", but last year, the board gave us a full-time police officer. The town, you know, voted for that, and I can't thank them enough. So I only budgeted for that full-time position. And, you know, we discussed this last year, that I didn't budget for it from January to, I think it was May 1st, the votes in March, figuring two months after that would be the time to do a background check on somebody and hire them. So before that person actually became on payroll at Barrington, it wouldn't be until May. So that's why that's really the biggest increase, is pay raises and funding the ladder of that first quarter for the new position. This is just a snapshot of what Lieutenant Joy and Sergeant O'Brien helped me with immensely last year on doing a staffing analysis. So this is just a snapshot. We currently have 10.5 officers. The Department of Justice, you know, said we needed 25 officers, and I was, you know, here to tell you that no, we'd be walking on each other, and that's unnecessary, in my opinion. So these are just some of the numbers on the snapshot. The Carcy School said we needed 15. The Bartel formula, not including me, was 13.5. And again, we went through this about 20 minutes, half an hour, of last year. So I just wanted to recap. We needed three, we got one, and I really appreciate the community doing that for us. Not asking for a new one this year, but I will next year. I want to go into it softly, strategically. I do have a plan in place, but it does discuss certain personnel within the office, so I'd be happy to share that with you, non-public. But just as... So you hear this the first time in 2020, I'll be asking for another officer. Yes, ma'am?
Based on the studies that you've listed, is this based on our total land mass, total population, or the number of calls received within the town?
Actually, all the above.
Okay.
Most... It's all based on data and not feelings and emotions.
No, I understand, but are they all studying the same thing?
We studied what you just said, the data. The others are a lot of averages and just based on population alone.
Population.
Like, one officer per thousand was kind of the buzzword used in a lot of these different studies. But the Bartel formula literally broke it out, as you said, calls for service, population, and those types of data. And we had laid all that out, and I still have it. Select person, I'd call if you'd like a copy of it. I still have it. I'd be happy to forward you last year's presentation.
I think it's because you're not requesting another FDE this round.
Not this year. I'm just trying to let the board, the community, know that we're still understaffed, but we're... This year, going into 19, we're funding last year's approval by four to five months. So I'm trying to go easy, and I think that we'll have an opportunity next year, moving into 2020, to affordably fund an additional officer.
Chief, please carry on.
Part-time hourly, I think we all know who this person is. He's been with us since the '80s, and I couldn't be happier to have him. This is how I break it out. He works 15, 84 hours a year. We have him scheduled for three 10-hour shifts, and we leave two hours a month on the table, if you will, in case he gets held over. He's not entitled to overtime, because he would never work more than 40 hours a week, because he's part-time certified, so the Nantucket R.A. 100 won't let him work 40 hours a week. So that's kind of how I build in overtime with him, and that's how we get to that number. He's not getting a $1,400 a year raise, which is in there. Last year, for whatever reason, I'll take the blame, that I didn't put in his pay increase from last year into this line. He's just getting his... what's been agreed upon here. Shift differential is just a dollar an hour for the officers who work from 6:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m., the overnight shift. They just get an extra buck an hour. And that's broken out, you know, through the union contract. And it's simple math. $12, you know, during that 12-hour shift, 365 days a year, is $4,380. The perfect world, that we're staffed two officers for the overnight shift, gets us to $8,760. This, going into 2019, after discussing this with the town administrator and the finance director, for ease in billing, for ease in finance, I had submitted back in September that we're going to break this out on its own line, which it has been for years. Through the consolidation last year, new system, old system, we believe we meshed this into the full-time hourly line and potentially left it broken out alone. This year, for the ease in billing and help win, it's going into the full-time hourly salary line. It's not going to be broken out on 4123. The grants. In your submitted packets that I submitted in September, under the Highway Safety Grant, that's our traffic enforcement grant, that's a dollar. I didn't have the figure back from the state through the grants. I got that back literally a week or two ago by email, and that's the grant number, 1285. That's not in your packets that I submitted in September. I just got this.
So that line... Excuse me, Chief. Line item 4132, that's a new line item?
Nope, same line item, same number in your packets. It'll show $1. It's not in that...
4196.
I'm sorry?
It's 4196.
4196. Chief watched the number. Highway safety, traffic is the line. I'm sorry?
Oh, nothing, nothing. I was talking about...
We'll give you a behind maybe.
Yeah, the bottom of page five, the last line, is $1, and it needs to go to 1285.
4196.
1286, actually, is the way it would round.
Well, it may have been the old number.
Is it at least in your packets, right? Is it my PowerPoint that's wrong?
Yes, it is.
Yes, PowerPoint.
No, it's... No, it's wrong in the packet, too.
Okay, thank you.
I think that was the old number.
And in my budget printout, I think it's right.
Okay.
4196.
Any further questions on that line? Whatever line number you have, it's a dollar. It's going to 1285.
Is that anyone from town?
Yeah, today's... See, it is the right one right there.
Yeah, 4196.
Right.
The 8760.
There needs to be a...
Where we see an increase in line...
The amount of that number.
Right, where the amount needs to be changed.
46. Is a large portion of that actually the 8760?
Dollars are correct.
So it would be 14 plus the 87.
Yeah, he had the account number right, and the dollar was wrong.
Only today.
Because he didn't have...
Because he just... Yep, okay. We had a little discussion on it. It was just, it's going to be easier for the finance director, so that's going to be the change. Police overtime. This is going to be level funded this year. As I look and go back and do the three-year averages, you know, we're actually on a downward trend. Last year, we were low 70s. Now we're 71, so we're starting to get there. And a large part of this, I think, is because we moved prosecution over to the county. Some of the overtime lines, if you look back three years past, they've been in the $80,000 range. I think we're going to get there and be actually $60,000. We're running about four or five points over so far this year, and part of that is staffing. We lost three experienced officers in 2018, and to backfill those positions, you know, we start running through overtime. But I'm comfortable leaving it there, just hoping that we're going to level off and that we're not going to have as many vacancies moving into 2019 and moving forward. Police witness fees overtime. This is to actually fund the officers that go to court and get paid overtime to go to court. It's just nice to break that out. It's always been broken out. There was a little glitch. Again, a new system versus old system. Chief removing it from the timesheets somehow. And that line is going to show $2,500 bucks in it for all of 2018, because we believe that we're also paying court overtime out of the previous line, out of that line, which also helps get us to where it was staffing and court was coming out of that line as well. Holiday pay. This is where the officers work Christmas. You know, they're not scheduled to be off. They just come in, they go to work, and they just get paid their straight rate of pay. Some communities do it different. A lot of it is, you know, union-driven and agreed upon through union contracts. With us, we just come to work, and the officers get paid their straight pay array, their straight rate of pay. And then, twice a year, they get paid holiday pay, and that's what that amount is. That 24501 is based on current officers' pay rates. And I banged my head against the wall for hours getting to that number. If anybody wanted to sit with me individually to how we got to that number, I'd be happy to do that. Police earn time buyout is nothing new. This is actually throughout the town. I dropped that 2,500 based on the law of averages. Three-year average is $15,128. I don't like this line. It's always tough. It's literally a roll of the dice. If every officer did not take one hour of earned time, the maximum liability to the town is $36,000. Now, we know that generally, staff wants to take a few days off, a couple weeks off, and what have you. They want their time off. That's how I got to $15,000. This $36,000 is based off of everyone's current rate of pay to get to that number. And hopefully, throughout the year, people will take time off. I put in, what's the half of the liability? If we half-funded that line, it's $18,000. I'm willing to work off of averages. Police employee benefits. This is health care. This is retirement for the retirement system, and it's actually down $7,000. I think we're going to have final numbers on that later this month, but right now, that's the number that it's down. Police prosecution. This is a set fee of $11,500 bucks. This helps us prosecute violation-level and misdemeanor offenses. We've had this in place since early 2016. Staff used to do it themselves here, and then we decided to move it over to the county for prosecution, and that's been in existence since 2004. I ended the motorcycle unit. We used to have four officers that were certified to ride the motorcycle. We had had a motorcycle unit for over a decade. We currently have no officers that are certified through the police motorcycle school, nor do I intend to send anybody. So I ended that program. The motorcycle is being traded to offset that $11,500 bill. There's been some good questions raised about the motorcycle. What's the value of the bike? There's still something that I can't quite wrap my head around. I'd have to defer to the finance director, Gatsby, how money comes in, how money goes out, things like that. If you have specific questions on that, I'd really refer you to the town manager or the finance director. The long and short of it is, is two years ago, we crashed and totaled an old motorcycle, received an insurance check for $8,000 to $9,000. We used that money and a couple extra thousand bucks and bought a used motorcycle, an arms-length transaction from Seacoast Harley-Davidson, Reddenhampton. The motorcycle two years ago was $12,000. I think it's a good value that the $12,000 purchase from two years ago is now going to go and offset 11,500. Police contracts, level funded. I'll go back to this one for a minute. Stratford County dispatch fee is up 5% going into 2019. The county has raised it 10%. The chiefs and everybody that's dispatched through the county dispatch, regional center, had asked if the county could just phase the 10% in over a two-year period, and the county agreed to do that. So it's going to be 5% this year, 5% next year. That fee hasn't been raised in over a decade, so I don't pocket that fee, because it's held firm for 10 to almost 15 years. IMC is our specific police reporting system. That's our water. If you all drinks. Here, I cut. This was, I think, $950 to $1,000 last year submitted. This is contract. When we get dogs delivered to the police department, because they're running at large, and the good-hearted citizens decide to capture the dog, put them in their vehicle, and drive the dog to the police department, we appreciate that. We caution you to be careful in doing so. But when we do that, if the dog's friendly, the officers have done a nice job taking a picture of the dog, uploading it to social media. We now have a Barrington Facebook page, and it's worked out quite well for us. So isn't the Barrington Connection site, to where generally, within an hour, we have a phone call from the owner that, "That's my dog you have held in captivity at the police department." Usually running around happy with the officers, and they usually enjoy the company. But if the dog's not picked up, and it has to get brought to the Pacheco Valley Humane Society, it's contractual, I think it's $50 a day or something like that, that can be back billed to the town. But because of the success of social media, I've cut that, and I've moved that money up to cover the Stratford County dispatch increase. And I'm hoping to do the same thing next year, so we actually don't feel the 10% increase. Schedule Anywhere is our electronic scheduling data for the entire office. GPS monitoring is the devices installed in the cruisers. SWAT team is a $1,000 fee, and that's just for them to come out, and it's the yearly fee to help buy gas and training and things like that that the SWAT team uses. We used to have two members on the SWAT team. We currently have none. Yet if they're needed, they're a phone call away, and it's invaluable. Equipment maintenance and vehicle maintenance change. We typically run over the $18,000, but it's offset by detailed billing, you know, for maintenance. So the three-year average is that. We can leave it at 18, because it's offset by back billing for details and cruiser maintenance. But it's tough to gauge. Well, why don't you just cut it if you're backfilling by detail? Because I don't know how many details we're going to have next year. And I don't know about availability and all that type of stuff, so I'm comfortable leaving it with a $1,500 deficit and hoping that the details will help pay for the oil changes and the vehicle maintenance and things like that.
Technically, doesn't the detail money move to the general fund, though it doesn't go back into the police fund?
Yeah, we offset against this line.
Right. Yeah.
And it ultimately goes back?
Yes.
Right.
Right, right. We just take it in... Yeah, we take it in the general fund, and we just cover it from... From our expense, our overfunding clients.
There's a $15-an-hour charge, isn't there, for a cruiser? When you move a special... When you built a special detail rate, you built in there for the cruiser. I thought it was $15.
Yes, and the details are actually a positive cash flow now that there's a three-year union agreement in place.
Right.
So the vehicle is covered, and then, you know, the town, through roll-ups and payment and things like that, it actually shows positive cash flow.
Yep. I remember that. I just clarified the way in which the money makes it go back into the...
So police office equipment and maintenance, this helps. Maintain the, you know, all the computers and printers and things like that. It is what this line is used for. This was a new line last year that I was asked to break out. We now have Rockport, you know, so I think we're just beginning to discuss, do we even need this line? Should this line get rolled into, like, the administrative-executive line? Or, you know, what is the Rockport fee's going to be specifically for 2019 for the police department? So it really doesn't matter to me if it's in my line or an administrative line. It's... That was the amount last year. We're pretty close to it. So I think I just leave that alone this year. If the guys wanted to move it, it'd be... It doesn't matter to me.
This is similar to the clerk's line, where that would cover parts and say you need it, and it'll hard drive and things like that. This is not for labor. This is for the... Because the labor is covered under the contract and the financial administration.
Right, if you had a laptop that's cracked out, and you had to go get a new laptop.
Yeah, my understanding is... Fire department has one of the broken screens or something like that.
Copier lease, that's a five-year lease. That should stay fixed for the next three to four years. I think we're a year or so into that new lease. So again, that should stay right there. Five years, 17, 28, and then the tech agreement, and then the contract base rate, and all the upcharges. Damn.
Didn't we buy a copier?
Mine is leased. We had that discussion about 18 months ago. And actually, at the direction of the board, I looked at purchasing it outright. We're leasing it. And at the end of it, after I presented it to you folks, it was decided that the best avenue was to lease it, and I agreed with that.
The floor at the town hall are all owned.
All right.
The big thing to keep in mind with that is, at the end of your lease, to make sure the hard drive in the unit for the... Yeah. Wiped is destroyed.
Yeah, wiped is...
Take it out and destroy it. Yeah.
Telephone, down $500. And again, we renamed this last year. I think it was called the Communications Line or something else, but for 2018, we decided to rename this for, I think, simplistic, you know, billing and administrative decisions. But it really just covers everything. Five MMTs, those are the mobile data terminals inside the police cruisers to be able to operate them for connectivity. We have three Verizon cellphones, AT&amp;T long distance. That was actually a question that had come up. Why does the police department pay for long distance? And we're working on that answer. What I need is, you know, I think everybody would agree is that when we pick up the phone at the police department, we're going to call Kentucky State Police three times a day, like we did last week for a case we're working together, that we can be able to make that call. I think the fire chief is in the same boat, and that we're both working together to get that answer. And again, he may have it off the top of his head. I get rid of my landline about four years ago. I don't have a landline at home anymore. I just use my cellphone for everything. My wife's cellphone, that is. First Light, 5940, that's the big one. That covers our internet tieback to the county. All the vendors listed, if you total everything up, it equals 10,684. I'm asking, we use $11,000, just in case there's any mid-year increases. We got a little bit of meat left on the bone. Police printing, police business cards, our envelopes with letterhead on it and things like that. Some forms, you know, like our written warnings and things like that, and that's not overfunded. Police conference and training, this is all staff development. I can't thank you folks in the community enough. When I got here, that line was $2,000, and we worked together, and we had a plan. And I said, every year, we increase that by about $2,000. And $6,000 works. We did a look back, you know, what's $6,000 get us? How do we do? How do we do okay? And it worked. So I'm not going to increase that. I think it's going to be okay moving forward. How do we get to that number? There's 12 of us, 12 certified police officers. If we use a round number of about $500, it gets us there. Some classes are more expensive than others, but I'm not asking for an increase. I think six will cover it. Police dues and fees, this is everything the agency belongs to, my chief's associations, New Hampshire Internationally, my FBI National Academy, the DAIR program, Foster's local media subscriptions, United States Police Canine Association, and New Hampshire League, which is the law enforcement assistant professional group. Mileage and expenses was a brand-new line for us last year. It was $100. We're over that this year, so I'm just asking it to go to $250. Postage used to be $2,400. We dropped $400 off that last year. We're getting close to $2,000 already this year, so I think just level funding it. A bulk of that is used for, and this is where... I'm going to be a little harsh going into next year. Register your dog, register your dog, register your dog. A bulk of that postage is used for mailings for the hundreds of unregistered dogs that are in this community. This isn't chief-made law. This is New Hampshire R.S.A. 466 or 477. It's one or the other. It's about 17 pages of dogs unregistered. We need to do a better job. This will effectively save money if we can get that down. So I'll have a little patience moving into next year. It's going to be an all-out, full-court press. You'll see me on social media. You'll see me standing at the podium, compassionately reminding the community. Compassionately reminding the community to please register their dogs.
I have a question on that. Now, I know the town hall in some cases tries to collect email addresses from people. Have we utilized those email addresses as a way to remind people?
I have not, no.
Not that it's something I think you shouldn't necessarily have to do, but tying in with the town hall to take that utilization of town email addresses and say, "Hey, by the way, you haven't done this, you might wanna do it."
And the town clerk, her and I have met, you know, on this, how can we do better at reminding people? You know, and that's literally what it is. And, I wanna start going down the legislature discussion on the budget, I'll just make it quick. I just, I don't see why we can't register your dog at the time of registering your car. But the law is specific, it's gotta be April, for whatever reason, it's April. So the town clerk is trying to work with people to, that come in early to register? You know, maybe there's some room there to, "Hey, while you're here, it's a little early, how about you register your dog as well?" And to do those things. So we're trying to work together, but really, if we could cut the dog registrations down, we can cut that line down. Supplies. This was a line that we took last year and consolidated it. It used to be our old office line. And our, you know, like a operating supply lines, tasers, taser cartridges, ammunition for the firearms and things like that. We combined it last year, got there, that number works, I don't see us, you know, needing to increase that line. Uniforms and protective gear. This line's always tough. This line is really built for more of a maintenance-type line, not a... We have three officers leave last year and the officers that I hired weren't the same size or statute, stature of the ones that left, so it's down to the uniform shop. Fifteen hundred to two thousand bucks later, the new officer is suited up, ready to go. So I'm willing to keep it at sixty-five hundred, knowing that that's our three-year average. And I'm hoping that we've settled off and we're gonna be okay. This is nothing unique to the town of Barrington, it's happening nationwide. Strong job economy. Everything you see in the news about the police each night doesn't help with retention and recruitment. So we'll leave it alone, but that's why I run over nearly every year. Yes.
What happens to the old uniforms with some of these?
I keep them in the salad court, in a closet, a metal closet, because we don't have an area inside to keep it. So I warehouse, if I were to leave, my uniforms would go in this hanging filing cabinet in the salad court. You can't turn it back in. No. They're used garments. Let me share with you.
Go ahead.
I was gonna ask, do you allow the staff to see if those will work for them?
Typically, what happens is I don't even have to open the door or raise my hand, staff knows when someone's leaving before I do. And, you know, we can joke about it, that locker and that person's equipment is generally pilfered before their last day of work, in a good way. I need that, hey, that's a brand-new holster, I need that. And generally, what happens is the used equipment finds its way to the salad court.
Thank you.
After your inventory is done.
Thank you, it answers it.
And also, just to kind of talk about what, I think where Dan was going, is if you look at like renting and leasing, you end up spending more money on renting and leasing and garment care than you do if you just end up buying it outright.
So again, hopefully, we'll level off, settle out, and that line will be fine. But again, it's more of a maintenance line as opposed to, are an outfit and staff. The vehicle line. Typically, the hot topic of the discussion since I've been here, and actually, it was the first presentation before I was chief that was the hot topic of discussion. As it should be, it's a big-ticket item and I don't take it lightly. So, you know, we can discuss it, there was a number of things that I was gonna put together that I didn't because it's so time-consuming. To get buy-in from the board, to get buy-in from the community, I'll put together whatever you'd like, if you can send me in the direction. I'm gonna give you enough tonight that I think makes a decision that, yes, we need a new cruiser moving into 2019. But if you need more, if you'd like more, just let me know specifically what that is and I'll absolutely try to put that together for you. I'm asking for one new cruiser moving into 2019. I'm using the old thirty-three thousand dollar number because I have no better number. Well, how come, Chief? Because I buy cruisers off the state bid, and the state bid number is not out yet. It should be out in another month or two. It comes late, I just don't have it. So I'm trying to make it work off of that number and kind of look back. Twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six thousand is typically what we've spent over cruisers for the last couple of years. Maybe the price is gonna go up, who knows about tariffs and metal, we'll see, but I'm just asking for what we used to have. Moving forward.
What's...
Go ahead.
What's the life of a cruiser?
Something, we can run about five years, we got a couple that are five years old now. I can share with you, one of the five-year-old cruisers, we were at a fatal accident about two weeks ago. And while we were there, trying to work, we shut the cruiser off because it was leaking antifreeze. So usually, five years is a hundred thousand miles. Again, a hundred thousand is an arbitrary number, pick a number, is it one oh five, one oh ten, ninety? It's an arbitrary number that seems to have stuck. From my twenty-four years' experience, when they get up around a hundred thousand, that's when problems begin. Five years, a hundred thousand, we have one that's one hundred fifteen thousand now, it's still running, it's still... I'm gonna probably move into that cruiser, that's the one that's starting to give us some problems. That was also a cruiser when the officer was inside writing a report. And then had a call for service and needed to jog out the back door to get in the car and go. The officer parked the car, sat for a half hour, wouldn't start, fuel pump was gone. I can't add these problems, you know, we gotta provide the level of service. And these cruisers, the fleet is actually well-maintained, it was well-maintained when I got here, it was a little large. We were at nine. I've heard the concerns from the community. Too many vehicles, too many cruisers, too many, too many. I've heard it, I've listened, I analyzed this, and I got rid of one. We used to have nine, we're down to eight. The bottom line is, is nine was too many, seven ain't enough. It was just last month that I was actually talking with the deputy town administrator. And it was the day that we had no cruisers left. A handful of times a year, all cruisers are in use, or we're down one. So what I wanna do is get one new cruiser, and we'll trade in the Queen Mary. The Queen Mary is our 2011 Crown Vic V8 gas-guzzling boat, that's rear-wheel-drive. Virtually worthless to us in the winter. I don't know how we did it for years and years, driving V8-powered rear-wheel-drive cruisers, but we did. So that's what I'd like to do. And remember, what we did is we did two new cruisers in 2017 and we worked together and removed it for 2018. A little bit of a look back.
We had some...
Go ahead.
We had funding.
You traded in a vehicle worth about eight or nine thousand, so you got most of the cost, you got over half the cost of that.
The Dodge.
Yeah, the Challenger.
Yeah. And, and what it was is we jumped, and we literally, we literally saved, we saved the community money by doing this. And a quick snapshot, why'd we do two in 2017? Because I came to you.
Right.
And, and we said, you know, Ford is discounting the Taurus's. And that's what it was, it was a one-time shot. They were typically twenty-four grand per Taurus, they had knocked them down to, I think, nineteen-five, we have that number.
Right.
And that's when I came to you and I learned that and just said, "Look, drive this line into the red." We had had people leave, we're still in the black, the bottom of the line, and we worked together and got it done with the understanding, "Buy it now, so I don't lose that four grand, and just take it out for next year." That was the agreement we worked together and had. And I've since found out that Ford is not even making, going into 2019, they're not even making a police baggage for a Taurus, it's only all Explorer. To get a Taurus for nineteen, you had to order it two months ago.
Even though they, they came with the tall wheel drive?
Yes.
Surprised by that.
I had talked to the, the state bid vendor. You know, as I'm trying to pull this together, the numbers, and he was the first one that told me, "The number's ain't out yet, but expect, you know, all those very easy and that type of thing." Twenties, and then by the time you outfit it, you're into the thirties, but he was the first one to tell me, "Well, if you want a Taurus, order it now, we can get it." And the build date, the run date, build date, whatever you wanna say, it was September. I wasn't coming to be in September, so hey, give me twenty, twenty-five grand, thirty grand to do a cruiser, and we'll take it out for nineteen when it ain't in there in the first place. A quick look back, we did this together in 2017, when I fought to keep the vehicle in there for 2017. I went back and did a ten-year look back in seventeen, and all I did here was cut and paste and just kind of bring this to the forefront. Two thousand six was one new cruiser, seven, one new one, eight, one new one. And then here we go in two thousand nine, and it's my estimate that because of the recession, remember what happened September, October of two thousand eight, with the stock market crash and the stock spiral out of control. Two thousand nine, no cruiser. Twenty-ten, we get back on the one new cruiser, eleven, a new one. Here we go, twenty-twelve. I wasn't here, but I can only imagine by missing a year and only doing onesies, this is what we get. We typically average about a hundred and forty to a hundred and sixty thousand miles a year. Twenty-thirteen, two. I wasn't here, I'm estimating that we lose one, and now we're trying to backfill all those years that we went one. As we continue to go a hundred and thirty to a hundred and sixty thousand miles a year, here we go. Then we get back into one, then one, then one. And then here I come saying, "Hey, folks, guess what? We should get two and save the town a couple of bucks," which was the right decision. And then I say, "If we do this, let's just wipe it out for 2018." Now I'm asking you just for one for nineteen. I suspect in a couple of years, as we continue to do a hundred and forty, fifty thousand miles a year, that I'm gonna have to come to you and say, "Hey, folks, it ain't one, it's two, we gotta do two this year." And with that, when I do that, it's gonna be a couple of years out. I'd like to look and try to be a little creative at that point, but that's hopefully gonna be a couple of years out. That's where we're at, I'm asking for one. We're probably gonna need two in a couple of years. Any other questions on the vehicle? Not today, moving, moving forward.
I'll give you a chance at the end, please.
Okay. This, this equipment line is what I, what I consider, you know, the electronics line, if you will, computers, printers, hardware, software, things like that. We're looking pretty good. We, we just replaced every single desktop at the police department, all eight. We're upgraded and completed about a month or two ago. Everything's working fine, and I can't thank the board and the community enough. We're good to go now, we've cycled out 2011 and 2012 computers, and we're now, we're now up to speed. So we're looking good that way. For moving into 2019, we really need a portable radar device. Get to the microphone, Chief, so the community can hear you. No, I'm doing this intentionally so they can't hear me. This is gonna be a device that I'll be able to go over to a tree and go over to a telephone pole, mount this device to the telephone pole, and actually be able to retrieve accurate data when we get calls, "Chief, they're speeding on my road." And the chief being, you know, kind of a little spot guy to try to break a smile on somebody's face and lower tension, to say, "Guess what, they're speeding on my road too. Is it between the hours of six in the morning and nine in the morning, and then again about three to seven at night? Is that about right?" And I do that out of compassion, respect, and dignity, just to kind of diffuse people that are angry when they're out mowing their grass and they see people flying down their roads. I need this device. I tried waiting to do a portable trailer, so we can do a speed trailer, a year or two ago for about fifteen thousand bucks. This is only three grand, and it's gonna capture for me all the same data that I need. It'll capture speed, date, time, traffic volumes, and then tell me exactly when we have to put resources on a specific road in a given area. This unit should last the town between ten and fifteen years. The town of Lee has one, it's about ten years old, I borrowed it, and it is fantastic. So moving forward, that's what I intend on using this line for. It's about thirty-two hundred bucks from state bid. Any money left over, and again, all our defense attorneys in here. We're watching from home, this is what I intend to do too. Moving into 2020, it's time to look at dash cams and body cams. So for 2019, I intend on doing a analysis of the products that are out there. Outfitting officers with a body cam, outfitting the cruiser on a free-trial period with a dash cam, and putting cameras and a barcoding system in our evidence room. That's for 2019. Yes?
That's gotta add up.
You're right. And I'll stay within budget on that line. Contingency, since I've got here, it's been a buck. Still don't quite know what that line's for, go for a buck. Wanna keep it or you wanna wipe it out, I don't care. Police clerical, we have one full-time police administrative assistant. Forty hours a week, she's not getting a fifteen hundred dollar raise, not, that represents about four percent. This, I think, was the same cause and effect as the part-time officer line last year, which, where the raise wasn't incorporated in this line. I apologize. Police canine. This was a new line last year, I was asked to break out this line, and we did. That's Lieutenant Joy and Gypsy, our canine unit. Some quick facts. Barrington Police Department has had a canine unit that began in 2003, it's 2018. It's Lieutenant Joy who's here with me tonight. And since then, you can't count and track the number of hours that goes into reaching the level that Lieutenant Joy is currently at. He's a certified United States Police Canine Association tracking judge. He's a certified patrol dog trainer. And with that, some of the costs that goes into that, over ten grand in savings for the town, over ten years, it's five hundred bucks a year to certify a dog. Because we have a certified patrol dog trainer, it costs us nothing, because we made the investment into Lieutenant Joy for fifteen years. Lieutenant Joy, a few months ago, has been part of the New Hampshire Canine Police Academy since 2003. He's reached the level of director. He's the director of the New Hampshire Police Canine Association. This is where it becomes discussion. Gypsy is ten years old. She may be retiring in 2019. We're hoping... We're hoping to get to twenty-twenty. So this is the first time the community is hearing publicly that Gypsy is aging and we need to begin to have a discussion on Gypsy's retirement. I'm gonna throw it out there quickly and then I'll, this is our last line and this is over. Since I've become chief, I have ended a number of things at the police department. We had a military-grade Hummer that sat in the back. Every time I wanted to use it, we had to go put about four new batteries in it and a couple hundred bucks to tune it up just to start the thing. I get rid of that. I get rid of the police motorcycle unit. We had a fleet of nine, we're down to eight. This isn't something that I'm willing to say we don't need. Not when we have somebody that's trained to the level of Lieutenant Joy. We can have that discussion, and I'll only say this once. If Lieutenant Joy, when he decides to leave this agency, which hopefully is after I'm gone, we can have that discussion then, if there's no interest within the department. So we're gonna start to talk about through this process routinely and frequently on Gypsy's retirement. She's ten.
How long does it take to train?
Have you come in the right place? I brought the right person to that question?
There's, there's no good answer for that. It's contingent upon what we do as far as replacing the dog and how old the dog is, what kind of training it has when we select it. The last dog that we just selected for the city of Summersworth, about three-ish, maybe four weeks ago now, what we term a green dog. It had some obedience work in it, it had some apprehension work in it, it had some scent work in it. That dog for the handler selected as a new handler, it's probably gonna take him close to nine months to certify and get up and running. If you handed me that dog, from like you go around a little bit right now, I could probably have that dog up and running in half that time. Good, solid dog, good base. If we selected a dog that didn't have that base, because I have the experience and training to put that base into it, cheaper money, longer period of time involved. So there's a, there's a balance there that we have to reach. I'd like to tell you I can have a dog up and running in five or six months, but that's gonna mean I need a dog that had a base into it to begin with.
And I don't think you should be held to that because, like you say, you don't know what you're gonna get.
And they're not robots. It's all independent.
But it must be interesting work.
It's the only thing that's kept me going all these years.
Oh, that's the one, that's the job I'd like.
Dan?
I think Gypsy dragged you around.
Yeah, now. Would Gypsy go retire with you?
I won't speak for the chief of police, but that would be my assumption. I, I would, I would fight that tooth and nail. And quite frankly, I wouldn't want to be the individual that tried to grab a hold of her and take them home with him, so. That would be poorly for somebody.
It's common practice.
It is common practice.
Chief, did that, that concludes your presentation?
It does.
All right, thank you. Is there any questions from the board? Select person Hatakov?
So I'm just reading quickly online that dogs that become eligible to take the training admissions test are between the ages of eighteen and forty-eight months. Wouldn't that mean that we should start introducing a new dog now so that there's crossover when Gypsy retires?
So that's, that's how I did it the last time. Ego, I've had, I had him since two thousand and three. I retired him in two thousand and eleven when I put Gypsy online. I had them overlapping for a period of months before that. I, I ran Gypsy from six PM to midnight. I ran Ego from midnight on. New dog during the less busy hours, experienced dog during the terminal hours. I would love to do that again. If the select board supports it, that's the best way to do it because we're not impacting the town services at all. I have a certified dog right up to the point where I replace a certified dog. If we wait too long and Gypsy either, A, ages out, hips go, something else goes wrong and I have to take her off the road and then we're fighting to put a new dog in, we go through a period of time where we don't have that service available in a certified capacity.
Knowing that, when would you start looking for a dog?
I've already started making inroads in the anticipation of this happening. When I placed the dog in Summersworth recently, I spoke to the vendor that we got that dog through. He has a young dog. I like the way he socialized his dog. It's a dog attitude very similar to the dog I have now that I don't have to fear going around children, doing demonstrations with the scouts and the kids in the schools that I do. I've already posed to him that when that dog is of an age where I can test it out, that I'd be interested. That's down the road a little bit. So I've already started making inroads. I've already started talking to people in the community. So as things come up, I'll keep people posted.
Just a minute. What, what would the cost be for the town to have that type of selection?
So again, tough speaking because things change from dog to dog. The dog I just placed from Summersworth, I can speak intelligently about. I believe that was five thousand dollars off the top of my head. So that's a round table there.
Appreciate that. Salkman Hatakov?
On line item for eight thousand dollars, where you were speaking of the new equipment, portable radar, and some other pieces that you wanted to add, bar scanning evidence, things like that. Have you built into your budget any training for that software programming and usage? And who is going to take ownership of those particular pieces of technology?
The two evidence techs that we have.
Okay.
So those are, you know, in place at some of the agencies. You know, so training, I didn't specifically add money to the training budget because it'd be more OJT on the job training, where the officers could go to another agency. What system do you have? How does it work? How do you like it? You know, and train with that and just have a smooth transition that way as opposed to going to a company. It's, it's a good piece. And that's why I listed as number three in that hierarchy is cameras have to come first and then the barcoding. It'll just help us track it within the evidence room. But I don't anticipate on any, you gotta go to a week's school to use it. It's really just software and one piece of hardware where it is the device that you want, like the sticker that goes onto the piece of evidence that, you know, sheet of package you put into the evidence room.
Select person, Dan?
What are we doing from a planning of infrastructure for that? Because when you start talking about video recording, data storage, officer-based cameras, cruiser cameras, that eats up an enormous amount of data storage.
It's, so all the money that the camera companies, where the money is, is in the data storage. It's not, there's actually, Taser, who is now called Axon, will actually give you a camera for a year. You know, outfit your department for a year, but the understanding is we get your data storage. So there's all those different things. So that's why it's for 2020. I put that in there just where's this line going? And that's kind of the, the, not the sense of urgency, but what are you gonna do with that eight grand this year, chief? Get those things done now to make room for the cameras next year. 2019, what I wanna do is test all those. Bring the tech committee into it. We like this unit. It's, you know, wear and tear, things like that. And bring that information to the tech community, the tech committee to help decide. But for 2019, alls I wanna do is free trials for the cameras, dash cam, body cam.
Salkman Hatakov?
So the one other question I had with the portable radar, are you required to post in any way? Like, we currently have that large unit that's a big white metal unit. And if you're driving along a roadway, it flashes what your speed is.
Speed trailer.
Yeah. So I understand that this is different than that. But what's the return if the community members don't even know that? Like, let's face reality, we all slow down, take our foot off the gas when we see the large white trailer. It happens naturally and reminds all of us on our roadways, not that I ever speed, chief. Reminds us all on our roadways to slow down. What's, what's the, the purpose of the portable radar if it's not having the secondary effect of reminding the public to slow down?
So what I would be able to do with that is you, you kind of answered the question in part by, you, you see the speed trailer, your speed is, it has an effect for a few hundred feet before and effect a few hundred feet after. That's why during the trailer process, I wanted it, I didn't speed. You know, it was all capturing data because I didn't want the community to know that this radar component is part of that. Because then the kids start playing with it. They start hitting the gas and they start playing with it. How high can you make it go? I was sixteen once too. The statute of limitations has expired. But the kids will start to play with it. And it doesn't create the true data. Because even as law-abiding citizens, oh, there's a speed trailer, it doesn't record me, doesn't it report me? Are they gonna show up at my house, bang on the door and give me a ticket for coming through here at seven in the morning? The community doesn't know really what it can do and what it can't do. With this device, it's a little smaller than an air conditioning unit and it would capture the data. So when a community member calls, traffic, they're speeding on my road, this is a constant, it's weekly that I get these calls. I can take this unit, go out, attach it to a tree or a pole. There's no legal requirement that I have to post it. And then it'll capture the data. I can print the data. And I could go meet with you as the complainant. No, you don't have a traffic problem here. You might have saw a car go by quickly. But it'll, it'll present the data. And nobody knows we're capturing it. It'll be true data, unmanipulated. Oh, there's the speed box, slow down.
Is it prosecutable?
No, it won't. Alls it does is capture, you know, the data. I wouldn't take it and go into court with a stack of summons. That's what's gonna come later. It'll be like a phase-in approach. Again, I wanna be careful talking tactics, but first you gotta collect the data, the good data. Then we'll put out, then we'll put out a marked cruiser to say hello to the community in that road at that time. That'll be day one, where it may be a little heavy on mornings that day and a fully marked cruiser. Then on day two, there may be an unmarked cruiser.
Excuse me. Please, I think we ought to stay on budget and not on the, on the equipment side that's coming down later on. We don't wanna give too much of it away. Is that acceptable to you?
I think so, quick.
Just a minute. Is that acceptable?
I have all the answers that I needed.
Thank you. The, Dan, you have a question on the budget?
No, that last thing.
Do you have a question on the budget, please?
No, I wanna, we're commenting on what we're talking about.
Well, that's why we're stopping the comments right now on things to come in years to come. It's not on the current budget right now.
All right, well, I'll talk to you on a subject later. Chief?
Moving on to the budget part, I have three, three areas. Forty-one ninety, forty-two ninety, eighty-five fifty, all for outside details. Now, when you collect that money for doing outside details, do we also have for the retirement aspect of it that kicks in for that?
Yes, if I may. The, the, the older version of the spreadsheet had the, if you look at the first two digits, they're all one. And that means operating budget. Those were eighties, which meant that they were revolving funds. So they shouldn't have been printed into this report. They were printed into it in there. But in answer to your question, yes, we calculate the value of retirement when we're figuring what we're gonna charge to, to others. So if you look, and the one I handed out ten free does have the eighty accounts listed, but that was in era, in up part of the operating budget.
Is there any more questions from the board? Saying that, saying that I'll go to the ABC, Steve or?
I just have one. I don't think it's pertinent for this year, but in your history on the cruisers, were any of those outside of the operating budget? Were they all acquired through the operating budget?
Can I answer on the history since?
Steve John likes you.
They, what happened was they were not in the budget, but they were spent out of the operating budget. We had money unexpended at the end of the year and we bought an extra cruiser, we bought a highway truck. We bought several vehicles in, I think, two thousand twelve or thirteen because it was a catch-up from the recession. And we had unexpended money. And after that, the board said, we don't wanna do it that way again. So that's when we are using fund balance to pay for items that are capital in nature. But, so when you say was it, they, they were paid for out of the operating budget, but one of them wasn't budgeted in the budget.
Is there a policy on capital-like items in terms of value that, above which you do not use the operating budget for?
No. But in this case, the life of this, of these police cruisers is what keeps these from being triggered into the CIP. If you look at the capital improvement plan, we don't put cruisers in there because even though they're higher than the dollar amount, which I think is ten thousand, MASH is not here, they don't have a lifespan of ten years. So we, we don't include them in that, in that kind of capital item.
Do you have a guess, please? Go ahead.
I have one quick question and a comment. The comment is in reference to, first, we'd like to say thank you to the chief. He answered all of our questions ahead of time, did an excellent job and we appreciate that. The only question that wasn't answered was the long-distance one. And we were not questioning your need for long distance. To be honest, we were kind of surprised that you still get charged for it in this day and age. We, we just thought it was part of a package deal and we didn't understand that you have to pay more for it, to be honest. Which we're still kind of curious about that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look into that. And there's another question you asked that we're still seeking an answer on, Dale, which is the, the Gatsby. We asked the auditor on that one. We haven't got an answer.
No, we did get that answer.
Oh, you got it back?
Yeah. The, there is no Gatsby policy on the equipment switch for a service like prosecution. He did say, the auditor, that is, did say that he does want it written into the budget. So he wants to see the eleven-five in the budget in the prosecution line and offset with revenue, which wouldn't necessarily be cash, but it would be the sale of town-owned property for whatever he is using to trade for the prosecution.
So, so basically, we would build in a revenue and an expense that offset each other?
So, yes, exactly. So he wants to see it in there, but.
So we should put that number back in, but we'll put in revenue so there's no impact on the tax rate.
Exactly. What you would do is take whatever the book value was after depreciation, what was on that that evaluated versus the eleven-five, what we're getting back.
So your budget won't go up, but it'll be documented?
Correct.
Well, his budget will go up, but his impact on the tax rate won't go up.
My actual question, though, is you referenced on tonight's, you referenced in the part-time and the clerical, the fifteen hundred dollars. I'm good with that. What I'm trying to understand around my head around though is, you said there was no pay raise last year. So does the fifteen hundred dollars represent a pay raise for last year to compensate when they didn't get one in this year? Or is that just fifteen hundred for this year?
So they both, so that, those lines covered two individuals. They both got pay increases consistent, you know, with what they were supposed to do. They did get it. I didn't add it in there.
It wasn't budgeted, but they was, it was paid because it was contractual.
So you just bottom line, took it from somewhere, rolls, within your own budget, which is fine. But where, so the extra fifteen hundred though, is it fifteen hundred per year is my question? Or is it fifteen hundred for two years?
Fifteen hundred.
Per year?
Yeah, for next year.
Thank you.
For going in next year.
Okay, that's all of my.
Yeah, it's not back and.
It wasn't seven fifty a year or anything like that or anything?
No, no, no.
Steve, Dale, do you have any other questions?
No, thank you.
Does the board have any other questions? And I want to thank you, sorry?
It's a very good presentation.
Yes. Chief, I want to thank you very much for your presentation. We appreciate it. And I'll probably be working with you later.
So the next time I revise the budget, I should put the eleven-five in there? Is that the consensus in the board? And I'll put in the revenue report.
Anybody object?
The eleven-five for the prosecution.
Prosecution.
The trade-off.
Yes.
Okay, there's, there's nobody opposed to it. Okay, there's nobody opposed to it?
You're right, Steve. You say a decrease in revenue.
Moving on, a public comment. Any public comment? I remind you that public comments are maximum of three minutes. Sam.
Good evening, board and public. First off, I just wanna remind everybody here and everybody at home that there is a presentation by SMP this Thursday at 6:30 in the middle school cafeteria, auditorium, cafeteria, whatever you wanna call it, um, cafeteria. And yeah, public is welcome and encouraged to come. Thanks. Sorry, 6 o'clock, don't show up after early. 6:00 p.m.
And when you say, just because on the tape it will be playing after Thursday, you mean on the 8th?
Thursday, November, the 8th. Thank you, John. Yeah, so that was the first thing. Second thing was just a question on capital reserve funds. And just as the chief was going through his presentation, I was curious, could capital reserve funds... Could there be a capital reserve fund to be used to set up for police cruisers? Or is that too small of an amount for purchase?
You could set up an expendable trust, but as you notice, we replace one every year. So it really doesn't... Because you'd be putting in what's just taking out every year.
Okay, yeah, all right, that makes sense, of course. Yeah. And the only other thing, too, just to the chief's budget was dog licensing is... Obviously, that's a pain for you and it's a pain for the owners. I'd say, and I know a person who received a summons for their dog license not being renewed. And I'm not sure, John, or if anybody else, is running to other municipalities and maybe set up like an automatic renewal service. Seems like that would be handy for all parties involved.
Well, we send out notices to... Well, we stopped sending them.
You stopped sending two grand as it is.
No, stop. We got yellow.
You'll pay in advance.
Okay.
You'll pay in advance for your dog.
That might have come as a tax bill, but I'm pretty sure they stopped sending them.
I need to check with the... When you see him tomorrow at election and everybody vote tomorrow, Tuesday, the 6th.
That's right.
You can ask him.
All right, thank you all.
Sam, before you go, are you going to... Is the library gonna have a table tomorrow at 4:00?
Yes.
I believe so, yes.
Yes, we'd like to have that. Everybody's gonna miss it by the time we... That'll be nice, so thank you.
I think Conservation is also doing a table.
Yes, they are.
Thanks.
Any further public comment?
Just as a heads up, I got notified that we did not receive funding for the... In 2018 for the safer grant. So with your blessing, I will start the process all over again.
Anybody object to him stopping, starting the process again? Chief, you have our list.
Thank you. The other thing is I'll ask at the next meeting to be put on the agenda briefly. I'm going to try to get votes for, in time for the meeting, for the parking kayak monitor, for the ambulance. And also be requesting to figure to free up some funds out of the revolving fund for a couple of big pieces of equipment that I don't think I can get out of my budget. Putting in there. That's just a...
John, we'll put that down for next week, please.
All right, two weeks. Our next meeting is in two weeks because it's Veterans Day, chief.
Thank you.
Any further public comment?
Lydia Kow, Gwinway Vanant. I just had a question about the police budget. I was wondering in the training, if it's possible, is that... Do you include CPR training for all your police officers? So that part of it?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I think further that you also have...
Defibrillator.
Defibrillators in the three frontline cruisers, correct?
Any further public comments? Saying that, we'll move on. Review of the minutes of October 29th, 2018. Comments?
I have none. They were long.
Yeah, they were long, and I found some items there and I've asked them on to be corrected with name spelling. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Select person Hatakov, group. All those in favor, signify with a saying aye. Aye. I oppose. Carrie's.
I would like to thank Connor not only for doing that set, but for doing minutes tonight. Suzanne is busy setting up for elections tomorrow, and Connor volunteered to do the minutes tonight.
Thank you, Connor.
Moving on, administrative group, do you have any more?
No report.
No report. Look, Neil's there. Under all business, we have voting. And Tracy, if you could, please, just reiterate the times for the select persons. Have it on the rec, please.
So we have to have above 33 hours to have a quorum, 6.45 hours each of course. Donna and I are gonna start the day, and I think chief will be there pro temp so that we have a quorum of the select board. And then I think, based on your volunteerism, that Andy, yourself, chairperson Bailey, and Dan will be starting at 12:00. Open the last.
12:00.
The second floor.
I'll be there, we'll be all set. Thank you, select person Hatakov. Any new business? Saying that, we'll move on to the select person's reports. Select person, Eric?
Conservation, Matt. And they do have a meeting tomorrow, 2:30 in Epping. I both arrived at Charlie Moreno and maybe the chase man on Forest Plan. And this communication, I see, John, you're in chain with it, too, about the town forest. Is there a clarification on the money? Did you get that?
I talked to John Wallace. The money from the town forest goes to the conservation. The rest of the money goes to the general fund. This selectman would be overseeing those. Also, by way of clarification for the public, Charlie Moreno is a forester, and as a forester, he did the cutting that... He did the oversight of the cutting that became the Rabbit Habitat. So that's what that is about tomorrow.
Anything else, Dan?
No.
Thank you, selectman Hatakov, please.
So when we meet in two weeks, the rec department will be presenting their budget. In the interim, they have found a new part-time administrator assistant that will be starting, and there has not been a meeting that I could attend.
Select person Hatch.
We have a meeting on Thanksgiving Eve for a hearing on a setback zoning board.
There you go. Select person, Dan?
Planning board meeting is tomorrow. I will not be there because I'll be in voting.
There, thank you. I have nothing to report either. So with that, we have our last public comment. Is there any public comments? John?
If I could just enlarge upon the rec commission. So the ABC knows we're not meeting next week. We're meeting in two weeks. Rec commission is coming in. But also, Green Play, who did the strategic plan, will also be presenting. That's the reason for moving their meeting.